I'd like to welcome everybody to May the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three commission, I mean work session of the Limestone County Commission. Under public comment, I know we have one here, Mr. Brian Jones, if you don't mind stepping up here, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
In front of you, you're going to see a packet we brought this morning. It has two price quotes prosecuted by Carpel and another one from Spartan Technology. And also the approved abatement strategies. The county has received approximately three hundred thousand from opioid settlements. On page seven of the abatement, it lists the law enforcement options that we can spend that money on. We're requesting a one-time appropriation of a hundred thousand to purchase the software. If you look at page twelve of Carpel, their price quote is in there. And then on page seven on Spartan, both of them are pretty close in range. Upfront cost is right at about seventy-five thousand for Carpel and about sixty thousand for Spartan. We actually are preferring Spartan. That has, it has to do with the discovery portal as to how we send the information to the defense lawyers. We're in a situation right now where the grand jury software and the case management software we currently have is failing. And for instance, the last grand jury, we had a problem where the software was switching the defendant's name with the victim's names. And we caught that pretty early on and had to continue quite a few of them until next week. One of the things in this one is, as I've explained before, the way we're funded, we started the fiscal year six hundred thousand dollars upside down. And all the money that we're generating is going to operating expenses and payroll. Part of the money that's coming through, part of these settlements and everything is, this money is coming to the counties to help us address the opioid addiction problem. As you watch on the news, you see the issue of fentanyl. The fentanyl has replaced meth, it's replaced cocaine. Most of the cases we're coming in now have some type of fentanyl connection. And one of the big things, not only is this grand jury software going to help us start our day-to-day operation, it's case management software, but it also helps us track the kind of cases that are coming in. So that way, if there's a particular grant that the county needs to apply for, we'll have the data to do that. In the opioid lawsuit, one of the biggest problems was the fact that the state came to us and said, we want you to tell us how many cases are pills, you know, how many are fentanyl, how many are that? We couldn't do that. And other than go through twenty-five hundred cases a year, one at a time to see what they are. What this software does is it basically runs the operation, it runs all the case management, it runs the grand jury, it does any type of reporting. So like if you call me in a year and say, I want to know how many fentanyl cases you prosecuted last year, I can hit a button and I can tell you in about five minutes. You know, the money that has come in on this is very restrictive. And so we were asking for appropriation of the hundred thousand, which will cover the software, it will cover the storage, because right now, we currently are storing ten terabytes of information, which are all the pending cases and all the new cases that are coming in. Plus it'll allow us a little bit of leeway, because I'm anticipating we're going to have to buy new computers as well. Okay? Does anybody have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ellen, do we have any more public comments?
No further comments.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate it. And like we've always said, you know, if anybody ever has a public comment or anything and you can't make it to a meeting, you're more than welcome to email it in or get it in to us and we will put it on the record that we have had public comment on other issues. So thank you, everybody. So first on the agenda will be the minutes from May first of two thousand and twenty-three. Anybody got a discussion with the minutes? All right, next on here will be the claims, an amount of one million, one hundred eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents. Anybody got any dispute with any claim? We have no public comments, resolutions and orders. First one on here will be to approve a resolution providing the Limestone County participation in the July twenty-first of two thousand and twenty-three, of twenty-three, on back-to-school sales tax holiday. This is something we do every year. We, we do it for severe weather and other things also, but I didn't, has anybody got a discussion with this? All right, second on here will be to approve a resolution for the chairman of the Limestone County to authorize and execute a file and award application and enter into an agreement with Alabama Department of Transportation for aid in financing of section fifty-three ten transportation assistance program. Anybody got a discussion with that? All right, number three will be to approve a proposed revised Title VI program in order to comply with Title VI federal requirements. And this is something we have done in the past. We're just revising it. It's for ADA stuff and Drew may need to alleviate on that, don't you, Drew?
No, it's, we need to have this updated for certain grants that we're applying for.
And we have approval of these in the past. This is just a revised and updated. You had, requires to update it every so often. All right, any more discussion with anything there? All right, and contracts, agreements, and MOUs. It'll be to approve the chairman to enter into a contract for a shoulder machine. And I'll kind of brief on this. I know Mark will be talking about it during the, in his section of it. What we've got is, is our shoulder machine is gone, it's wore out. We've been borrowing one from the city of Athens for several years. And of course, you know, I mean, the city, I mean, we've kind of, we need, we need one of our own anyways. So I want to thank the city for letting us use theirs the time they've used it. And I know Mark will go over the process with the purchase or lease or rent or whatever. But this is just to be an agreement whichever we decide today during the work session to be approved to look into a shoulder machine. Anybody got a discussion with that? All right, appreciate y'all. All right, next on here, we have no budget visions, no merchant purchase, board appointments. We have one board appointment here, this will be to approve, nominate of Curtis Hollisworth, Dave Bradford, and Larry Bursette for the submission to the government as the three candidates. This right here is for the vacancy to the Board of Alabama Elk River Development Agency. This is up at the rural village and the way that's structured is, they have so many from Limestone County, so many from Lauderdale County, and the mayor has to sit on Meeks County, you know. Well, Mr. Mickey Lay has, he has resigned off the board and is moving into other options in life. And we'll thank Mickey Lay for his time on the board. And we submit them, these three names, and they will pick one of these three to serve on that board.
Okay.
So anybody got a discussion with either one of the gentlemen on there? And I know that this board, I think it has seven members, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. I'm thinking that's right. It may be six, but I know it's six or seven. Anybody got a discussion, anybody else like anything with anybody on the board? And while we're on board appointments, there also is a, and Drew is looking at this, there's a spot on the hospital board that we'll have to put somebody on. If anybody's got any names for somebody who might be interested in serving on that. I know that Drew, they sent us a thing saying they needed three names, but Drew was looking to see if, so we got to figure all that out. So I just want y'all to be aware of that. All right, award of bids. We have one bid here to award. This is for sixty before the building for solid waste. This is from Rocket City Metals, the buildings and carports for sixty-six thousand, one hundred dollars. I may, Mark may want to alleviate on this, but has anybody got any discussion with it?
That's just the building, no erection.
That is erected, that's constructed, so that's, that would be going on the slab that is up there.
They're going to pull the slab?
No, the slab that's existing. It would be, it would be anchored to the slab that's existing.
It was the slab where the old Fred's department store used to sit on. We'll be putting it on the slab where the Fred's department store sit. So anybody got any more discussion with that?
They're going to use this for?
This will be a temporary shop for them. So until we do whatever we're going to do long-term, this would be their shop facility.
And this is a metal prefab building that can be moved at a later date. Where our goal is, is when we move someday, we'd love to turn this into a washbasin shed or something. So I mean, it's, it's not just for this, I mean, it will be a building that can be moved and put back up at some point in time if we, if we elected to do that. Or it may be used for storage or maintenance or something after this, so with, but I mean, just temporary shop building. Anybody else got any more discussion with that? All right, personnel action, policy and staffing. We have to approve to hire Stephanie Elkins as a government accounting position effective May fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-three. And the second one will be to approve to hire Isaac Nicholson as a temporary labor and engineering department. I don't know what day he's starting, does anybody know? But anyways, anybody got a discussion with either one of those? Mark, do you know what day Isaac is starting?
Oh, he'll be starting, I think it's two weeks from now.
Okay. I just knew it.
Sorry, I apologize. Yeah, he's, he's actually a senior in high school and he's going to Alabama for civil engineering. And so he's going to assist, he's actually going to assist in the engineering department for running rates and checking temperatures and tickets and more kind of along the engineering side of it. So he's gonna, he's trying, he's, he'll assist Hunter with a lot of his duties during the construction season.
You know, that's a great program. I know Leila up here was, she came in on the kind of co-op program, but my son did that one summer, my oldest son, he worked in the engineering department with Terry Bot doing estimates and stuff one summer, so. And he learned a lot of experience from that. And he was going to school for drafting and he learned a lot in that, so. It's a good program. Anybody got any discussion with either one? We have several merit increases. I guess every, I guess a third of the employees was hired sometime this month and times past. So anybody got any discussion with anybody on the merit increases? And I want to thank all of the employees, you know, without us, without them, we wouldn't make it to where we are today. Anybody got a discussion with anybody? All right, engineers department, Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have six subdivisions for y'all's consideration today. Abbey Brook subdivision phase two, this is a major for preliminary approval, creating thirty lots in District Two. Believe this should be the south, south of Ed Ray Road, west side of Meadows Road. Kennesaw Creek subdivision phase four, this is a major. It doesn't reflect it on here, but it, this should, this, without your objection, I'd like to make this preliminary and final, because they act, this actually was a portion of phase three that was completed. And Drew and I talked about this on Thursday, about the best way to handle that. And we had, and we, we figured making it preliminary and final, even though, they built it according to the construction plans for what was approved in phase three, but they just completed a smaller section when they did phase three. So that's forty-six lots in District Two. This is south side of Nick Davis Road, approximately nineteen-hundred feet west of Jones Road. Big Creek Home subdivision, this is a replat of lots six and seven. This is a minor for preliminary and final, creating two lots in District Four. Alley subdivision, this is a minor for preliminary and final, creating three lots in District One. Roscoe subdivision, this is a minor for preliminary and final, creating two lots in District One. And Laxan subdivision, this is a minor for preliminary and final, creating two lots in District Two.
All right, anybody got a discussion, any subdivision? We need to put final on the second one, right? Preliminary and final.
Yeah, like I said, Drew and I had a conversation and we figured that's probably the-
Derek, you didn't have any today?
In a way.
I slid out today.
Slid out today.
Anybody got any more discussion, any one of the subdivisions?
The shoulder machine, like the chairman alluded to, we included that over there to keep from having to, depending on how we decide to go, to keep from having to amend the, the agenda for the meeting. But the situation with shoulder machine, our old shoulder machine, it, it's not really functional anymore. We have been borrowing the cities and we are grateful for that opportunity. But we, we can purchase a shoulder machine like what we've been borrowing from the city. It's a demo machine, so it's about ten thousand dollars cheaper than what would be the price if it were considered new. It is a new machine, but they just carried it and let people demo it. And so it'd be fifty-one thousand dollars to purchase. So if we were to purchase that, I, there's been some, just in individuals' conversations with you guys, we've talked about possibly buying that out of ARPA funds. We've talked about two or three different things, but I didn't know. This was an opportunity to kind of discuss and figure out what the direction everybody wants to go. We can lease a machine that is in the lease fleet, and it's three thousand dollars a month, just under three thousand dollars a month, like twenty-nine hundred a month, I believe it is. We can lease it, we can lease it for four months, five months, whatever it takes for us to get through our construction schedule and we turn it back in and either lease or buy later. There is a larger machine, it's a self-propelled machine, it's approximately three hundred thousand dollars. I, I looked at it and for us to get a return on that investment is just not, it, it would take us about seven years to get a return versus the output of the smaller machine. By then, we're talking, I mean, for a six, for a six times the cost. It's just, it doesn't really, it, it doesn't really compute. But, but that is an option as well. So like I said, there is a, there is a self-propelled machine out there. So I was just wanting to get some of your feedback and, and some, some of what your thoughts were. And then if you choose to move forward with either the lease or the purchase, then that would be the motion we'd need to make in the meeting if we decide to strike it from the agenda, we'd strike it from the agenda. But that was just kind of the thoughts that I wanted to run by you.
Well, I would prefer, let's just buy one. I mean, if you got ten, we got ten thousand dollars off on our demo one, I mean, that would be, my, my theory would be that we would own it, because you're going to spend fifteen, twenty thousand dollars renting one and we're not going to have anything to show. We're going to need another one, we're going to need it from now on. It's not like an asphalt season goes all year long, pretty much, so. You really can't lease it for three or four months and then expect not to need it in December if you have a pretty weak there, you know? So that's my thought, but I mean, I don't know.
Park our old machine, the one that we're not, it's broke. Will it do asphalt and gravel?
Yes, I mean, any of these belted machines will. When you use asphalt through them, there's, there's some extra maintenance that has to be done.
Reason why I was asking, you know, we got a lot of roads that needs some shoulder work, I just thought.
And it may be something that we can patch together, but it's, it's just a, it's an old machine, getting parts for it are difficult. We've robbed parts off of an older machine to try, try to hold it together.
A lot of the new machines really not set up, the one y'all been borrowing, it's not set up for asphalt, it's mainly for gravel.
It's not, it's mainly for gravel. The, the big, the three hundred thousand dollar machine, it's set up for both, but, but again, that's, that's quite a, a jump in, in cost.
Yes.
For the number of days in a construction season that we use it.
Right.
Would this machine do dirt, if you wanted to do dirt?
If you wanted to do dirt, yeah. Gravel dirt, it would take a, it would take a sandy, gravelly type material, but something with a lot of clay, you might not get a very good finish, but it would, it would put it out. It just, you, we'd have to work with some, some, maybe some stopped-up screeds and that kind of thing. But, but if you can have a sandy, gravelly type material, it, it can. So is the thought to, to purchase? And if it's purchased, is it, do you want to?
I would say purchase.
Okay. And then, is it, and then, which my thought would be either ARPA or Public Building Fund would be, or we'd have to do an amendment for that, I mean, we just need to know where to pull that from.
Six, one half dozen the other, it doesn't matter there. I mean, that doesn't matter. I would say let's just move forward, we'll put on there purchasing one. And of course, we, because if we don't do it, if we don't look at it now, the problem is, we got two, three weeks before you have another meeting, we're paving today. I know we're up in District One.
We have one, we have one road that we don't have shoulders on, we've got to go back to right now. So we're moving, we're moving forward with the paving, but we're, we're keeping our low shoulder signs out, we're going to have to go back to those.
All right, let's just put on there. I mean, is everybody fine with putting on there just to purchase one?
I'm, yeah, I'm fine with just purchasing.
All right, we got that. All right, let Drew handle that during this. All right, any more discussion with the shoulder machine? Mark, you got anything else?
Now, we are moving forward with paving. We're on Beetline Road right now. We did have an issue with our milling machine last week. It was, it was supposed to have been taken care of last week, but the part didn't get shipped out from the, from the part supplier. So we are, they tell us today that the part will be in. So we are, we're, we're moving forward with what we can do. I think we're finishing Wales Road and then we will, the part's supposed to be, they, they tell us the part's supposed to be here today. It was supposed to have been here, I believe, last Thursday. And Friday, when they didn't show up to put it on, it was, we were told it was because the part didn't actually get shipped. Went through, got put on, put on their shipping docket and didn't get picked up by the shipping company. So, so they, they sent it over the weekend and they're supposed to get it today and get it put on. So I will keep you apprised if that, if something changes there.
All right. Anything else from Mark? Anybody got any discussion?
Have you heard anything on our trailer? Drop egg?
No, the last, I, I've been checking with them. They have, every, every time I check with them, it's, it's still three months out. So.
Maybe like our part.
It may be like our part, that's what.
Yeah. So it may be that I have to find another option, but that one is, that one's the state bid option. And so trying, trying to purch, purchase from the state bid, but it's, it's been difficult.
All right.
Thank you, Mark.
All right, moving on, other business, we have to approve the designated ARPA replacement, revenue replacement funds for completion of road projects. Anybody got a discussion with that? All right, next one will be to remove the follower from inventory from the sheriff's office, it's the ADE machine. I, I think after a period of years, they just get so old, they have to be discarded, so it's just removed from inventory. All righty, I know you might alleviate more on that, but anyway. All right, next thing on here will be to amend the two thousand and twenty-three rebuild Alabama transportation plan. And Mark may want to leave you on this, I know it's, I think it's a project in District Three, right?
It's District Three's project, which was Snake Road and Fielding Road. We're, we're going to do Huntsville Brown's Ferry Road, so it's replacing Huntsville Brown's Ferry Road, or adding Huntsville Brown's Ferry Road in the place of Snake Road and Fielding Road.
All right. Anybody got any more discussion with that? All right, and the fourth thing on here, this is just, these next two items are just for discussion only. I know Commissioner Marksdale Bingo has asked several times about discussion, the work session slash commission meeting schedule. This is just time for people to throw out there their thrones and processes or whatever. I know he's asked this question, me personally, I, I, which I kind of said this in the first, I, I like it, would rather be in the afternoon sometimes, you know, because Monday morning, everybody's scrambling around trying to get going, but that's up to y'all. This is just food for thought, y'all can kind of come up with some discussion or whatever. I just put it out there, I know he's asked about it several times, so. Anybody got any ideas or anything y'all want to come back with or anything y'all want to talk about today? We're more than welcome to talk about it, so.
Well, I'll start out. You know, I guess years ago, or I don't know how many years ago, we had the work session the Wednesday prior to the commission meeting on Monday. And I like that, it gives you time to review what's on the agenda and do any homework that you need to do. I've had several citizens ask me, well, I'd like to go to a meeting, but I don't want to take off work. So my preference and would be to have the work session the Wednesday prior to the Monday commission meeting, say at three-thirty in the afternoon, where if folks want to take an hour off of work, they can do that and attend the commission meeting. Now, if y'all want to have it in the morning, I'd probably go along with that, but that's my preference would be three o'clock in the afternoon, just to give people an opportunity to attend the meeting if they wanted to. That's my thoughts.
And like I said, this is just for discussion. Anybody, anybody want to come up with something to come back with later or whatever? That was just, I know Commissioner Marksdale asked about putting it on here, about talking about it, so. That's what this is all about. Anybody else got any thoughts right now? Y'all want to think about it and come back with ideas later or what?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. All right, no more discussion with that item. I've kind of got that out here in the open. The second one on, the fifth item on here was, I've had several people just ask this question about working four tens with the, I know we have got a, a solid waste department that's working four tens now. And, you know, with the paving schedule and stuff, a lot of them, they have asked about working four tens, you know, and I know it's hot out there with them working and stuff. And I know that productivity, time, and so that was just thought out here for discussion. Anybody got any thoughts? I know I've talked with every other county around and some of them are this way, some of them is that way. I know all of Lauderdale, all of, I think Lauderdale County's four ten, I know Morgan County's four tens, Madison County's four tens, you know, with the construction side of things. So I mean, that was just kind of thought out there, so.
There's some productivity increases and you, you can, you can research and find that out, but I mean, just kind of the, the basic logic behind it is, is you lose, you lose a startup and a shutdown period and you lose a, a lunch break that you're, so that you're gaining that back end hours of productivity. So there, there are some benefits on that side in addition to morale for employees. There, there, I, I, I used to kind of have the thought that, well, it's, it doesn't cost anybody anything, but there are some kind of hidden costs, so I mean, just to kind of make that known too. I mean, there's, if there is, if you have a rain day, then you've lost five percent additional productivity, because instead of it being twenty-five, instead of it being twenty percent of your work week, it's twenty-five percent of your work week that's gone. So there's kind of a hidden cost there. There's holidays, if you have a Friday holiday that, that you guys approve, then you'd still pay that holiday. So there's essentially kind of straight time overtime cost in it. So there, there are positives and negatives to doing it, but I think, I still think it's a fairly cost-effective way to gain productivity and gain morale. But those are, those are just kind of my, my thoughts. So, but y'all, y'all ask any questions, whatever, we may not have the answers, but we can find some answers or whatever. This would be a good time to, 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 just let's bring that out.
So Mr. Chairman, you talking about four tens for in the districts and engineering or you talking about four tens at county as a whole? Well, it would probably work, the, I mean, what the idea was workforce field, you know, field force, you know, I mean.
Yeah.
And which would be districts and, and engineering, which now you could go to a hybrid, there's some people that go to a hybrid type work office schedule too, you know, that has longer, and I know Joseph's sitting in here. You know, there's some schedules that where people do it to where they work longer hours and part of the shift works Monday, part of them work Friday, and they, they rotate it like that. You know, there is, and that way, you know, you hear the call all the time, well, y'all close at four-thirty and I can't get there till five. So you know, if you, if you done it into the, where you built it into that, you know, you could, you could be open, you know, a couple of hours longer. It's how, you know, and there, there's different, there's all kinds of schedules to this, how it could work. It was just a, it's just a conversation piece, I mean, that's what it is right now. I mean, it's a, you know, I just know that there's been several people reaching out to me and asking me why we don't do it. And I said, well, all I can do is discuss it with y'all gentlemen, that's all I can do. And it's, it's a whole, wholly discussion issue. And I know it has pros and cons both ways. It's not a, it's no perfect scenario in, in any situation, you know?
I know in the summer it worked good for the paving group to get a couple more hours, but now in the wintertime, you know, it's, it's not really going to be a whole lot of, it won't be the benefit a whole lot in the winter, we don't.
Well, I, I know that in a previous job that I had, we, we worked four tens in the summer and then in the winter went back to a five-eight, but then it actually became to where it was, you could get your entire work day, I mean, once you get on site, you could work the entire period of daylight hours. So we stayed four tens through the entire year because of, because of that. So we would actually, you'd do all your stuff on the yard, gathering all of your, all your equipment and everything that you needed. And when you showed up to the site, you'd be getting daylight and then you'd work till it got, you'd work till it got dark and then you would be do, you'd be doing everything on the yard in the dark and then you'd get, you'd actually utilize your entire daylight period. And so we, we found that that was, that was beneficial, so we stayed at a full four-ten throughout the year. So, so there are some benefits even in the winter, staying four-ten, four-ten, so you can utilize your full daylight hourly.
And like I said, there's nothing we're here to vote on today, it's just a discussion.
I mean, it's a discussion topic. And like I said, any questions, I mean, I know Drew and I have talked about it and that there's probably some, there's probably some things on the personnel side that have to be considered and, and those kinds of things. So any questions you have, we can make a note and try to get you an answer, but, and so.
I mean, how they build time, you know, we're doing it on eight-hour days.
From vacations to a ten-hour day.
Yeah.
Just two hours or something.
Yeah, and, and what a lot of people have done in the past is, is you actually end up with a lot of people doing everything on Fridays and they take a three-day weekend or something to that effect and they end up, they end up actually building more time than they, than it would have actually cost them, just because they don't have, they just because they don't have, they, they have a built-in day that they can, that they can use. So, it, as far as personnel goes, that's, that actually works out in favor of the employees, what, what I've seen in the past. But I mean, it, it, everybody figures, figures out when to schedule their doctor's appointments and all those kinds of things and realize that they can do that without burning time. But, but yeah, as far as how the time works, that's something I think what Drew and I could talk about and look into the. So, if you're working a four, a ten-hour day, how does, how does holidays work? How do, how does the, the vacation and sick time work?
And like I said, this is just a discussion, I mean, this is what a work session is kind of for, just to talk about things.
That's right.
Anyways, anybody else got anything else with it? Any more discussion?
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
That we can be, we can be researching.
And I would like the four tens, if we had enough people where we could, you know, shift our off days where you covered Monday through Friday, but we shut down at two-thirty on Thursday. You know, it's a long time to Monday for what pops up from time to time. So, that's, that's almost sad, I see to it.
And, and that kind of goes, I didn't mention that kind of in the hidden costs. I mean, it does mean there's one more day on the weekend that there might be a call-out that could be overtime. So, I mean, that is, that is one kind of in those, like I said, kind of hidden costs. I mean, we, we figure, we figure forty-hour weeks for every employee, so whether they get forty hours in four or forty hours in five, but that, that is kind of in that hidden cost there to where that is one more day that you could potentially have a overtime call-out.
That's my thing, I just hate to be down on a Friday, but you know, that's just my personal thought. Well, I mean, I say, like I said, this is a, I mean, a lot of you court, I think courts got to where, right Brian, where they don't hardly ever, they don't hardly ever do court on Friday much anymore, do they?
It just depends, like if we're having a jury trial roll over, but by and large, most of the stuff's done, it's like, you know, Fridays.
Like I said, this is just a conversation, this is just something that was been asked of me and I, as a, as a duty, I told him I would discuss it, so.
I mean, any questions you guys have, I think Drew and I have been talking about this for a while, but any questions you guys come up with, let us know, because I, I mean, it's, I, I think that we, the, these, a different work schedule is becoming more the norm than a Monday through Friday and there's, there's, there's reasons for it. There's been a lot of studies and there's been a lot of things about the, about your workforce and productivity and morale that you gain instead of doing just your traditional Monday through Friday. So, there, there, there are some positives and some benefits instead of just saying, well, that's the way we've always done it. Well, you, you can fall back on that, but there are some, there are some positives and negatives. I mean, there are some positives of, of looking at, at a change and it's, and it's, this is workforce-wide. This isn't just a Limestone County thing. I mean, y'all, y'all probably noticed that there's, there's more and more people on Highway 72 on Fridays. Well, why is it that Fridays, there are people are on Highway 72? Well, it's because there's, there are more people that are only, they're, they're doing a four-day work week and so, there's more people with, with leisure time on Fridays, so they, they, they clog our roadways up. But, which makes working on Fridays more difficult when you're in the road. I mean, so there are, like I said, this is a workforce-wide discussion, I think, that's been going on for the last several years. So, it, like I said, that is something to keep in mind and any questions you have, feel free to bring them up to us and we'll see if we can get you an answer.
Anybody else got any more discussion? And if not, we will reset, we have no executive session and we will recess until nine forty-nine. Let's just say nine fifty, makes it easier for a couple of years.